Good evening, I'd like to call this June 11th meeting of the North Village Township Board to order. Please stand for the invocation and the pledge. As humble guests of your creation, dear God, may we with gratitude ask for thy love, wisdom, and guidance not only to this meeting, this evening, but also to our daily lives. Amen.
Pledge and devotion to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic where rich it stands, one nation under God and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the role clerk, Manley.
Zellnak.
Present.
Docket.
Here.
Here.
Otto.
Here.
Chick.
Here.
Manley.
Here.
All here.
Thank you. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the balance of the agenda as distributed. Motion by Chockley, support by Chick. Any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Thank you, that passes, seven zero. Now we have an opportunity for call to the public, and anybody, any member of the public may address the board this evening. Please keep your comments to three minutes, state your name and your address, and feel free to share with us whatever you have. Turn on the microphone and keep it right to your mouth so that even people on TV can hear.
I know it says dying, but I hear a little too fast when I want to pull the wastewater treatment plant and the supervisor's report.
Okay, well, let's allow our member of the public to speak first, and then we'll see what we can do.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Excuse me, sir.
David Gordon, Helena Road. Good evening. By the slimmest of margins, at a meeting, either the last one or the one before, on a vote of four to three, this board approved $200,000 for engineering designs on a $5 million sewage holding tank. As you know, the designs are only good for about eighteen months, and then they're obsolete. So unless this board quickly approves a $5 million holding tank, the $200,000 will have been wasted. By law, the board will need to alert the public about the borrowing for the tank, so I would suggest you contact them now before spending the $200,000. What if hundreds of people show up to protest this tax? Will you ignore them? Will it change even one vote? Because if it does, then the motion will not move forward. I suggest that the board conduct a legitimate, professional survey regarding sewer expansion and the associated costs, because it seems prudent to spend the money for that before you spend millions for something that the residents might not even want. Speaking of money, let's talk about the capital improvement plan which is on the agenda for tonight. Sewers. Sewers again, $7.1 million. That's seven times as much as roads, fifteen times as much as devoted to North Village, seventeen times more than the police department, thirty-one times more than the park development, thirty-five times more than the community center, and based on what's been spent for land preservation in the last couple of years, it's five hundred times more than land preservation. So needless to say, I don't understand this logic of this, because sewers was not really a campaign subject. I don't understand the big need for sewer expansion, because according to the MDEQ, we could have an additional thousand new families move into this community right now before you needed to expand the plant. So I'd kind of like an explanation for that, but my problem is, that now I read the agenda, and it says, quote, "The call to the public is not intended to be an opportunity for dialogue or questions and answers." Well, when is that opportunity? To get answers to questions? When will the board publicly make itself available to answer these questions for the residents? I think it's time to get that started. So there's thirty seconds left of my three minutes, so I would like to ask this question. Where's the evidence that $7 million for sewers is going to pay dividends to this community or revitalize downtown?
Okay.
I guess there's not going to be an answer to that. I'm giving you my time to answer it. Well, I'm all ears. Thank you.
Okay. Stop. Okay. Thank you for sharing your thoughts with us. We should get those answers for you and offline, that would be great, and then share it with the public too, so I appreciate that. Anyone else like to come up tonight to share anything for call to the public? Okay. Thank you very much. Board member response to call to the public, does anyone have any input? Okay, no one. Township manager report. Go ahead, Mr. Ains.
I thought you were going to mean...
Oh yes, and we're going to poll a couple things for you. We'll have to make a motion for that, I guess. Which ones are we polling?
The wastewater.
Wastewater treatment and the supervisor's report.
And the supervisor's.
We can talk about the supervisor's report at that time, okay? Okay.
Can we poll the police report as well?
Okay. We'll have to amend the agenda.
I missed it too.
Okay. Moving too quickly. All right, so township manager report, go ahead, Mr. Ains.
First off, the board had asked that we set up a citizen advisory committee to look at the road issue, and since this year is already going to be committed for the budget, the intent would be to start the committee in July and work towards what might be needed for the coming year. The board could appoint members of the board, but it'd probably be best if it was no more than three, as with your other committee. But I was going to go ahead and advertise that it is available, that we are looking for people that would give advice or input. It'd be similar to what some of the other townships have done when they've looked at the overall issue, and they've appointed a citizen study committee. And I have had some citizens approach already about wanting to serve. So we will go ahead and advertise, if no objections from the board, and then if you know of anybody that you think would be good on the committee, if you'd let me know. Second, the North Village Development Committee has started with the process with, as the board appointed, three members of your board, two, three members of the DDA, Mr. Lippens and myself, and then Mr. Burns when it gets to be legal issues. And so we have started that process. We hope to be moving ahead quickly on that and be back to the board within the next month at the latest to go with the recommendation, but we will be setting up meetings on that. The report on the planning, zoning, and building, I was relying on some information to answer some of your questions that I needed the controller to help me with, and I told her the priority was the budget and then to do the work I needed on that. So she said she would definitely get it to me shortly, and then my intent is to get that report to you by the next board meeting. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have questions, Mr. Docket.
I see on here about mid-page township manager performance review. You've changed your mind, you were going to have an open meeting, and now I see you're asking for closed session, you're pressured and that somebody think that that was a bad idea, or you did it on your own. Did you change your mind in fact?
No, I intended to go with an open session, but I also told the board if it seemed like most of you did not want it to be an open session, that I would then go ahead and ask for it to be closed. And the input I got back was that the board's preference would be to have it be a closed session.
Nobody asked me anything, but I would have had an open session, so even they'd do a closed session.
Yes.
Okay. Lease of the farmland, what did we find out on that?
Well, and that, it's still questioned on it, defining exactly what piece of property is that's being leased.
Well, I mean, they've been leasing it for years, you know, come on. What's so different this year than it has been for the last ten years? Maybe the attorney's got some idea, but there's nothing, the property didn't change any.
No, but once you said you wanted the attorney to do something about it...
I didn't, I didn't.
I meant the board.
Okay.
Then that...
Well, is he busy and he can't do it, or what happened there?
The lease is prepared, the township has it. The problem is the description of the property to be farmed has not been generated, because the description the township has, has also the fire hall in it and the cell phone tower. So the cell phone tower and the fire hall have to be deleted from the description, so we don't lease out the fire hall and the cell tower. And so there's no particular description for just the property to be farmed that's been generated yet.
Well, I wonder if the board knew that this was going to happen. Is this, what do we get, like a hundred bucks from the guy? It sure as hell not going to cover the lawyer fees. I mean, I don't know, why would we, why would we do something to ourselves, shoot ourselves in the foot? You know, I think this board should reconsider and say, go ahead, we don't need the lawyer, go ahead and lease it. I mean, or charge the guy, you know, five hundred or twelve hundred, or, you know, and that'll be worthless to him. So, this kind of stuff bugs me, when it costs more to let somebody farm it than, you know, than we're going to get in return. I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, but I'd be interested in listening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, my opinion is that we just let him plant it with, instead of mowing it ourselves, just have him plant it with clover, whatever he would have done, and not charge him at all. I mean, yes, there could potentially be liability issues, and we need to be cognizant of that, but it would save us from mowing. And, you know, I heard that he wanted to recover the property.
Well, I think I don't get to crop him pretty soon. Has he got a crop yet?
Clover can go in.
I mean, is it in? Is he farming?
Not that I know of.
Well, I would, I would think we should let him go ahead, but...
So, you know, anyway, maybe we can get a Plan B like that. It did get more complicated than it needed to get, so, yeah. Okay.
Who's going to pick up the bill?
Ms. Zellnak? Yeah, I...
If we're not charging anything, the board's picking up the bill for the lawyer.
What are you talking, oh, the farm, the contract thing? It's a retainer issue. I mean, he's on retainer. Yeah.
Retainer, 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 and then the retainer goes up. I mean, you can...
It hasn't gone up for a long, long time, Mr. Docket. Ms. Zellnak, go ahead.
Because a good horse will run to death, you don't ride him to death. So, we don't need to give him extra work, we don't have to.
I agree. Go ahead, Ms. Zellnak, you had something?
I tend to agree on the property. Can we just make sure we're covered liability and let, person that's been doing it as long, just let them do it?
Yeah, he has insurance.
I mean, we can just make sure we have, we're covered too in ours, and just let them do it. So how do we make that happen?
Give it to Mr. Ains.
Mr. Ains, can you make that happen?
And Mr. Burns, make it happen.
Just, I just think, yeah, just make sure we're covered from an insurance perspective.
I think you still need to have that contract in place showing that you're requesting insurance, but you can put zero on the amount.
Just say, do we have insurance?
Yeah.
Is it covered?
Yeah. He's already given us a copy of his insurance.
The document's done.
Okay.
And it requires insurance.
Okay.
The only issue is we don't have a description of what he's going to farm.
How do we get that?
Well, we asked the assessor, he said, "I'm not a surveyor, nobody wants to do it."
Good, I'm glad we won't get a bill for a survey, for Christ's sake.
So, can we just put something in the contract that's just, you know...
Just say everything but the fire hall.
How about the cell tower?
We'll try to do it, we'll try to do it, draw it ourselves.
Can we wrap this up? I agree.
Let's use some common sense.
Yeah, and then as far as the open session, I agree, Mr. Docket. I mean, there was emails that went back and forth, I certainly didn't express my opinion in the email, and obviously Mr. Docket didn't get it for the performance review. So, if the manager wants to, or offered to have it an open session, I think it should be done in an open session.
So do I.
Ms. Manley.
I have one more, though, I'm not done.
One more, go ahead, I...
Sorry. So, Ms. Ains, how are you going to advertise for the advisory committee for the roads?
We were going to do it through the mailing. You had mentioned that part of it needed to be on the taxes, but we were going to put something in there, we were going to put it online, we were going to do an email. And there's no real rush, because we're looking at next budget year. But I think we need to get it established this summer, let them look at it in present conditions, get familiar with the roadways now when the weather's good, and then they'll be in position to look at it when it's not so good.
I think the sooner the better. I mean, next year, and roads will be here before we know it. We're already in June, and we usually have the meeting in May, so it's...
Well, part of the reason I was waiting till July 1st was to see exactly what you were approving to be done this year with the funds that you make available, and then the committee would start from that point on and go ahead.
And so I have one more comment.
Okay, go ahead.
So, you had indicated a gentleman had come in here about the roofing at the senior center, and there was some conversation that we need to have a better way to communicate to our business owners as well as our residents who are paying taxes, that we are doing these improvements so that they have an opportunity or are aware of them and make a proposal, because they do pay taxes. So, could you comment on that, Ms. Ains?
Well, the reference is to a local contractor who said that he was not allowed the opportunity to bid, and so the board had already had five parties submit bids, and you had ordered the bid, and the work was scheduled, and based on your instruction, I had signed the contract. So at that point, the attorney and I had discussed that it wasn't reasonable to do anything other than go ahead with it. But in terms of what we might do in the future, I had talked a bit to some of you about setting up some kind of a sign-in where different contractors could advise us that they had an interest in doing work for the township, and not necessarily make it complicated where you had to send an email out to only roofing contractors or only concrete, but if they got on your master list, and whenever you had projects to bid, you could send an email out to those parties. If they weren't interested in that or didn't have that available, if they didn't have it available, we could make some other provision for them.
Well, I mean, I thank you for bringing it to, certainly I was in the office, and, but I do think it's important that we implement something, you know, a procedure so that our residents who may have a business, our business people that are residents, have an opportunity because they're members of our community and they are paying taxes, and it would be nice to make sure they're aware of some of the improvements. And it looks like we're going to be making quite a few going forward, so...
And I still have his brochure on my chair in my office as a reminder each day that I need to get that done.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
And then, again, I'd just go back to the performance review, is there, you know, do we need to make a motion to make it closed, or do we need to make a motion to make it open?
It's his decision.
It's in two weeks, it's his decision.
Not ours.
Okay, so you changed your mind.
Well, what I'm saying is that I had thought it might be nice to do something different. Some of the board has told me that I don't come up with enough new ideas, so this was one of my new ideas.
Okay.
And, but it seemed like, you know, when I'd apply for jobs at different communities, the boards always wanted them to be in closed session, so as a convenience to the boards, you would automatically do it as a request to be in closed session. I'm fine either way, but I had the impression that the board, the response I got back, at least, some people didn't respond, but the response I was getting back seemed to be...
I will respond, I want you to do what you want to do.
So what is it that you want to do?
He's got two weeks to decide, okay? Right?
I think we need to...
Why don't you let, why don't you let him answer? When she asks him a question, why would you answer?
So I'd just say, what, how would you like to handle it, Ms. Ains?
Well, my rationale for doing an open session was that, one, the board and the township gets criticized for too many closed sessions, two, I don't have anything to hide, and three, you might say more nice things to me in open than you might close.
Could very well be.
Or the other way around.
I wouldn't bother.
Yeah, I wouldn't count on Mr. Docket, but the rest of you.
And so the answer is, close or open?
Yeah, two weeks.
He's got a week and a half to figure it out.
Well, you don't have two weeks if it needs to be announced.
I don't think that it's appropriate to pressure someone.
No, it's on our next agenda, so we have some time for our next agenda.
That's it, that's all I have.
Ms. Manley?
I guess to give Mr. Ains my opinion, I mean, I didn't respond to the email, because it's your call, my opinion shouldn't have any influence on that. It's like, whatever you want to do, you should do. And I don't think it would change my evaluation, whether it's open or closed. And if we do it open or closed, I think we should still do it earlier.
I agree.
We should still do what?
Do it, do it at 6:15, not wait till seven to start it. Right, so...
No, it could be at 6:15 either way. That way it doesn't impede on your open session.
Okay.
But I'll consider it and let you know in the packet when it goes out on Thursday of next week.
All right.
Thank you, or this, yeah, next week.
Thank you. Anything else from the board? Okay. I would just like to, correspondence and announcements, I would just like to thank Dana Forster and James Tronco and Jack Seacrest for all the work that they put in on the events that went on this weekend. We had a Tronco Palooza, and we had a classic car show, and they were both well-received by the community, and people are looking forward to doing the Tronco Palooza again in the fall. So, so that was good, and I'm glad they helped, and I know Barb Griffith contributed and Max Molina, so a lot of people participated in this, and it was, it was a successful event, both of them, so, thank you out there.
And was it, wasn't it a boat show instead of a car show?
Classic boat show. Did I say car?
Yes.
Okay, classic boat show.
Yeah.
There were some boat, there were some boats on land, and, so, anyway, it was good. All right, approval of minutes. Oh, you have something? Go ahead.
Yeah. There's still a few boxes available at the community garden, and you may have noticed the four picnic tables at the park, the wooden picnic tables. June 29th is Whitmore Lake Races, I understand that we could still sign up for that. I suspect that trustee Otto may have more information on that, if you want to add to that, no?
No, I'm not, not on that committee.
Okay. Anyway, June 29th is Whitmore Lake Races, I believe it begins at the middle school, if you want to sign up in person, arrive early, it's in the morning, or sign up online. I realize there's supposed to be two seats coming, available for Parks and Rec, both Tim Seville's seat and Caro Short. Parks and Rec meeting is June 20th, if you're interested. Come on out to the June 20th meeting, it's here at the Township Building at seven o'clock, and that, I think, is about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, next item is the minutes. Anybody want to take a shot at these? Go ahead, Ms. Belliger.
I got a simple one.
Okay.
Right at the beginning, Docket's name looks to be misspelled right under the, on the first page, under the adopt agenda, the second arrow. I think it's two Ts, isn't it?
Yep, two Ts.
And...
I missed that.
And I wasn't sure on the very last page if it was Chick moved and Belliger supported to support extending the use of 75 Barker, I wasn't sure if that was correct, or who did the moving, who did the supporting. So I don't know if anybody else may have any questions on that, and that was it?
I don't know. Ms. Otto, do you know?
So on that, in regards to page four, in regards to the Kiwanis using 75 Barker Road, it did not state what was on here. It did say that you would have Kiwanis stay there until we get evaluation back from Two Paws. That's exactly what it said. There was no, there was no pending or anything.
Right, well, we were going to get information back from the, from Paul Burns.
That's not what it said.
Okay. You listened to it?
Pending approval.
Pending approval by?
On the Two Paws.
Of the Two Paws. Oh, okay.
Yeah, made Kiwanis stay there until we get evaluation back from Two Paws. That's exactly what it said.
Okay. And it's a rummage sale and not sell in that same paragraph? Okay. Back to page one, under the adopt agenda, and we moved those item 10 and item nine on the second two arrows to precede item number two, so it was after item one but before item two. Okay, so sorry about that. The second column, the first full paragraph, Tepiak Hill is spelled wrong, there's an extra E in there, and then it's Steve Siffranic, not James Siffranic, for the people. Anybody else have any changes on page one? Go ahead, Mr. Docket.
Oh, not on one, no.
No, not on one? Okay, we can go to whatever page you'd like.
Page two, top of the second column, it's not a correction, but it says, "I asked if the township attorney recommended and got no answer. I would like to have an answer from the attorney."
Okay.
Said it, and this is an answer to the question. Chockley said that the resolution was recommended by the township attorney. And I asked that then, and it's not in the bullet points, but that's the question I asked, and I didn't get an answer. So I didn't get an answer, and it's not in the bullet, so I'd like to have it in there. And then I'd like to have an answer.
You need to write a specific word, you want something in, I can't make it up.
Yeah. I would like to change donation to contribution, though, at the top there. It's not really, townships don't donate, but...
But that's what the motion was originally, was donate.
Well, it, there were the memo...
Both, it had both words in there, donate and contribution.
Yeah, they had contribution, but, you know, it was an error.
The motion was to, the memo had donation, but the motion had contribution.
Does Wayne need to specify what he's asking or what he's pointing out?
Yeah, he does.
Because I don't know, Wayne, what were you wanting to have in here? What did you need added to the minutes? Ms. Limble would like to know.
What's the exact question that you want to be asked and answered?
I asked the question of when the supervisor said that, we're talking about the resolution of the preservation, land preservation.
Item number nine.
That's right, and I asked the question. She, what she said was that the, I asked where it came from, she said she wrote it, and she said that the township attorney said, had recommended that she put that in there. I, and I asked at that time, and if he, but he didn't ever answer me. So he can answer me now, and we'll be done with it, or, or I want it put in here. I want to put in the minutes, that's what I asked. So does he want to answer me?
Mr. Burns, you recommended that we have a resolution to find a public purpose for the...
I wrote a legal opinion.
I can't, I can't hear you.
I wrote a legal opinion that said that the board and...
I wrote a legal opinion that said that the board, in order to do the transaction, needed to make a finding of a public purpose for the expenditure of the money. And you have a copy of the written legal opinion.
And I what?
You have a copy of the written legal opinion that I delivered to the entire board.
Okay. Uh, thank you. I'll settle for that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, further, oh, Ms. Chick, go ahead, you-
Okay, real quickly, actually, two things. First thing I want to say, if we have like typos and name changes and that kind of thing, can't we send that to Lisa beforehand as opposed to discussing them at the meeting?
Well, that's a-
Said that many times.
That's what we should be doing, substantial changes than we do at the meeting, okay. All right, item number two, planning commission letter to the Board of Trustees regarding the marijuana ordinance. I don't know if that first paragraph is being redundant. It says, I'm going to go to the third line, "Permits to the township attorney to evaluate and to determine if the process used by the planning commission to evaluate it was proper." What is it?
The ordinance. You refer the marijuana ordinance, and it's just-
So you're questioning whether the, creating the ordinance was proper?
The marijuana ordinance.
Or the process was, or the process was proper. Because it wasn't any different than any process we did for any other ordinance, so.
Well, he's also evaluating the ordinance. I mean, he also is reading the-
Right, but it says to evaluate if the process was proper. Is that what we want, is that what was said?
Yeah.
Because doesn't, doesn't our attorney have to review all ordinances to determine whether they're appropriate anyways?
They haven't always done that, yeah.
Yeah, I think the questioning here was how it was created, and that's what you're questioning, if that was pros, if that was proper.
If the process, but also the ordinance, I mean, it's got-
Right, but I'm just questioning that line.
The ordinance has to be reviewed anyways.
Right.
I'm just questioning that line, why would we read like that?
I understood it to mean, not only, primarily the process, like the call for the hearing, and then the, the fact that the planning commission sent the opinion back without the hearing, or before, after the hearing?
That's down, that's down here, and that's, so if I'm asking, it's redundant.
Okay, I, I don't think it's, the first part of it says that I want, we referred the marijuana ordinance, and the application that includes districts' uses and permits to the township attorney to evaluate it. I should have said them, I guess. And to determine if the process used by the planning commission to evaluate the marijuana ordinance was proper.
Wow.
I guess it would have to be the public hearing and everything, you know?
Okay, the public hearing, I understand.
Yeah.
But if the process of creating the ordinance is, then are you going to question every ordinance?
That was fine, no, that was fine.
Okay, all right, that's how I read it, okay.
Yeah. So, to determine if the public hearing process was proper?
There you go.
If the public hearing, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any more? Ms. Otto?
So on number two, I, I see that we had a motion withdrawn, and that was based on Bellinger move that the board receive a legal opinion. But I don't see where the motion was voted on, on the top one. What was the outcome of the top one?
I don't know.
There was no motion carried, reported in that.
Okay. Hmm. Did you check the tape, Ms. Otto?
I did not, that part I did not check.
Okay. I don't know, I'd have to look at my notes, and I don't know if it's in there.
I don't believe there was a support.
I don't think we voted on it.
I don't think there was a support, I don't think there was a vote. I think it was, Mr. Burns responded that if it's, well, like I said here, need not research this if it's done lawfully, so I think that's why I withdrew it.
The original motion, not you, not the one that you did, Tom, but the original motion by Marling.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you meant the one down here.
So you think we have not voted on that?
Nope, we voted on it. I just don't know what it was.
Okay.
We have to go back and look.
Okay, well, we'll have to find that information out. Should we set these minutes aside?
Yeah.
Or, okay, and we'll make all of those other corrections, and, yeah, do we have any more?
Can I please ask what exactly, is this part right here above number two that you're asking about, or just that number two?
The part above number two was for number nine.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's what you're questioning?
No.
What are we questioning?
I'm questioning that there was not any record showing what was the outcome of that vote.
Of?
Number two.
Of, of number two, okay, yeah, okay.
That first motion.
Right.
There was one on the second motion.
But not this one.
But not on the first motion.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thanks for touching that. Okay. Who? Mr. Dockett has a question. Go ahead, Mr. Dockett.
I have a statement I don't agree with, Chick. I think it's important that we have these minutes talked about, just like tonight. There's a lot of problems with the minutes, and we're going to make it right. We, you know, this, this much of my packet is already a consent agreement, so I, I don't think we need to add the minutes to it, in my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, we didn't, but, yeah, okay, okay, go ahead. We're gonna, okay, and under number eight, it's BHS insurance, instead of VHS insurance. So that's on page three, under number eight.
Can you say it in the microphone?
V, yep.
I can't differentiate between V and B.
Okay, I'm just changing it to, tonight, okay, B.
B as in boy.
B as in boy. Okay, B, okay, and that's all. Okay, so we'll set this aside for, to find out that one vote, and bring it back next meeting.
Excuse me, you should just move to table the minutes to the next meeting.
Okay, I moved to table the minutes to the next meeting.
Support.
Motion by Chockley, support by Bellinger. All in favor, say aye.
I have a discussion on that, so I think Ms. Chick raised a good point. When can we get the minutes to be reviewed, so that, I mean, it would be nice to include in there, here's all the spelling errors, so that we, you know, here it is. So we don't have to do it at the board meeting. Or at least, we can say that someone found it, and we know about it, and then it helps Lisa and helps the board members. And I agree with Ms. Chick, I mean, the conversation should be maybe the meaning if there's something missing. Certainly a vote is important. But it'd be good to maybe have a little more robust process, so that the spelling errors and that corrections are identified and included in the packet, if possible. And then we can talk about any other, maybe misunderstanding or some content.
If they come in early enough, I do review them and make whatever changes that I've noticed with Ms. Limble, but I don't always have time to do that.
Sure, and that's fine if we don't.
Yeah. So anyway, here we go, they're tabled. Oh, did we, no, we didn't do. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, they're tabled to the next meeting.
Did the manager have a question or a statement? Mr. Ains, did you have a question or statement?
At one time, the board had said that they would like the minutes as soon as they're available in draft form, and we've been sending those out by email, so they don't always-
I appreciate that.
Yep.
So they, they don't always come consistent, because it depends how long the meeting was, how complicated, you know, that type of thing.
Yeah, there is a rule, six days, is I think it is. I'd like to have somebody look it up, but there is a rule that we get the minutes within a certain amount of time. Do you know what that is?
Okay, well, we can check into that. I also have the minutes, once you approve, amount to all the staff people in our end of the building, so that they can see what the board has been doing as well.
Okay. Well, let's move on to the public hearing.
I want to remind you about the minutes.
Let's move on to the public hearing. I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing for the 2019-2020 fiscal year budget.
Support.
Motion by Chockley, support by Bellinger. So now is an opportunity to come up, if anyone has comments on the next fiscal year budget, feel free to come up and share it with the board. Okay, seeing no one, pardon? Oh, yeah, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you very much. All right, so the public hearing was open, and no one wanted to speak. I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Support.
Motion by Chockley, support by Bellinger, to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you, that passes, seven zero. Now I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 1964, an amendment to chapter 10, article five, barking dogs and dog leashes of the Northfield Township Code of Ordinances. So, I made a motion to open, does any-
Support.
Second by Chick. Any discussion on this one? All in favor, say aye. Aye. We're opening the public hearing on the dog, barking dogs and dog leashes ordinance.
It, it looks like that, yeah. This one?
Is it stopped for that? Mine was right behind it.
Yeah.
Nope, that's it.
What number is it?
Number two A, number two A in my packet. I called it number two A. Yeah, because you had a question about this, Wayne, you did have it, because you had a question about the, the barking, it was called barking dogs or something, so you were concerned it was about dog, barking dogs. When I said that's just the title of the, the ordinance, and we're remending it.
Let's, let's do the public hearing portion of this, because we're going to deal with it again later. Okay. Does anyone have any comments out there in the public who would like to come and share those with the board about the ordinance 1964? Okay, seeing no one, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 1964. Motion by Chockley, support by Bellinger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No? Okay, thank you, that passes. Okay, the next item we're going to take out of order is the wastewater treatment plant question that Mr. Dockett had.
I can't find it in my, that either, but let me ask the question. I'm talking about the 48 hours overtime. That's eight hours, at least, more than you generally have, is something I should know that I don't.
You want to know why we had more overtime this month? The weather, the high flows. A lot of the high flows flushed rags down the lines, ended up in pumps, plus the weather, we had some issues with some storms and stuff, so.
It looked like it was quite a bit less flow than it was a year ago, but, as I remember. And the other question I had was, you have on there two hookups, well, they, they were two hookups, but they were free.
Yes, they were.
So, I don't, when, when they tear down a house and build a new house, and look down, and they don't have to pay the $63.50 or-
They put them back on the sewer bill.
Yeah, so they're back on the sewer bill.
Yeah.
But we didn't really gain anything, though.
No, but we didn't lose for once.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Willis? I just want to see that, I mean, how many days have you been over your permit limit for flow?
I think we are only over one or two days on the, the 1.3 million gallons we're over.
That's your maximum, right?
Yeah.
1.3, yeah.
But we were, we were consistently in the million gallons, but the flow was real consistent. We didn't have too many peaks, so it was easier for us to handle.
Good, yeah, because I see 1.4 and 1.5 on, on a couple days, and then you said it went back down.
Yes.
Finally, I guess, below, so that would have been nine days above 1 million gallons.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Was all your equipment running?
What?
Was all your equipment, equipment running at full blast?
Yes, yes, we did fire up the third aeration and had that running for the first time.
Okay, thanks. Ms. Manley?
You have a question, um, sorry, a question. So you're using, you use the, the third aeration tank to control the high flow?
Yeah, we were, we were using it as sort of a retention basin to even out the flows, but this time, we put solids in it, so we actually used it as an aeration tank. It took a lot of work to, to get it evened out and to get it to work, and, and we used that for like nine days, we had that up and running. And when we were, flows dropped down, we took it back offline.
So is that a viable option in the future, or something that we can work with?
Yeah, we will try and do that every time. If, if we approach 2 million gallons, we cannot, it won't help us that much. But when, just a little bit high, we can do it.
Okay. Ms. Elna?
And what's our permit for the plant?
1.3 million.
Thanks, that's what I thought, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for Mr. Willis? Okay, we have a question on the police report.
So, and I, my apologies, I didn't get to you before the meeting, Chief, but there's a new report in our reports from you, and I was wondering if you could give us an explanation of what it is.
It, it gives you kind of a map view of the calls for service.
Okay.
We don't like it, we're still going to play with this and try to adjust it to make it a little more user-friendly. But, like I say, it gives you an idea of where, from a map perspective, the different types of incidents occurred.
Okay. And then, so I have the map, and then on the other side, I sort of figured out the map a little, but I wasn't really sure about the graphs, what I was looking at.
There's no units that are visible.
Yeah, that's not a very good graph.
Okay.
We'll, we'll try to make that better, make it more understandable.
All right, and again, I just didn't-
I don't like the colors of it.
Yeah, it's a little, it's a little harder for us older people to-
Yeah, well, we're on that, can I ask?
I'm an older people.
Can I ask a question while we're on that one? What are the red circles along, it looks like North Territorial, what are most of those?
Are we on the map?
Yeah, we're on the map, just kind of curious.
I believe those are all medical calls.
Medical calls? Oh, okay. All right, wow, a lot of medical calls in North Territorial, huh?
Yeah.
Doesn't look like it'd be a good place to be living.
Hopefully it wasn't accidents.
Yeah.
Okay.
Don't live in North Territorial. Yeah, that's true, okay, thank you.
All right, so, we did this, okay. Now, we are at, okay, DTE request to remove trees. I will make a motion to authorize the township manager to sign the DTE tree removal agreements for tree removal on the identified township-owned properties, and to retain the wood chips for township use. Um, motion by Chockley, support by Manley. Now we can discuss.
Discussion, yes.
Yeah. I, oh, Ms. Chick?
So, the wood chips, where will they be stored? How long will they have to be stored there, and what, who's going to be spreading the chips?
We'll let Mr. Ains talk about, well, it's a Parks and Rec thing, go ahead.
Well, I, I did inquire with some Parks and Rec individuals when I saw that in our packet, and I asked, and apparently we don't need them at the garden, and we haven't used them at the one-mile loop, so there's-
Okay.
Apparently we have sufficient at the garden, we do not need more at the garden at this time, because I asked. Apparently we have sufficient at the garden, we do not need more at the garden at this time, 'cause I asked.
Where are they putting, where are they putting them at the garden?
I think between the beds, they were putting them.
Yeah, to keep the grass down. Right, but it still looks, when did they do that? 'Cause it still looks really weedy, it looks really bad still.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, I asked and that's the feedback I got, because I said, there may be wood chips. Do we even need them, do we want them, what?
We might be able to use them at the garden a little bit more.
Yeah, you could use like several inches to keep those weeds down.
Well, I'm just telling ya, I did put the word out there and ask, I said, there may be wood chips, can we use them? Do we want them, where? And it was no.
Okay, so where are they gonna go? Alright, then they'll just dump them on North Territorial like they do every, all of them. I mean, have you seen them? If you go down North Territorial where DTE is, there are mountains and mountains of wood chips. I mean, mountains of wood chips out there, so.
So those wood chips there are dumped there for public use by the tree removal company that parks their vehicles back there? Just, that's what, that's what they're there for.
Not DTE.
It's not DTE, it's a contractor for DTE.
I just didn't wanna see them sitting back there on the property forever and...
Yeah, oh no.
You said that's on North Territorial?
Give them the broads game!
There you go.
You can't miss them, so. So anyway, okay.
If I could comment?
Go ahead.
DTE contracts their tree removal and trimming, so it'd probably be the same people taking the wood chips. And in terms of identifying the trees, while they've given us while they've given us the area photo, I couldn't get them out before the board meeting, but I have an appointment Thursday afternoon to walk the sites with the contractor. But I mainly put it on because of the objection last year that the road commission received for removing trees. Didn't want, not wanna have the same situation where we had trees taken down that the board was not aware of.
Different issue.
Well, we don't wanna lose our electrical service either, so. Okay, so I am happy to remove the, retaining the wood chips.
Support.
Okay. So we'll just authorize the township manager to sign the tree removal agreements.
Well, I have a comment, I mean, you mentioned, I mean, the hickory trees. I didn't get an opportunity to drive by and see it, but is it possible just to trim them as opposed to absolutely remove them? Not so much about the elm trees, because a Dutch elm, eventually they'll die. But, I mean, on the hickory, I mean, I don't know. Is that an option, is just to trim them?
Perhaps if he walks them, he'll know.
Yeah, I expect them to explain to me why they wanna take a tree down as opposed to trimming it.
Five?
Yeah.
Do we know the size?
I don't.
Okay.
Again, they may be totally out of the way, or they may be in place we want them removed anyway. But I wanted to see them before I signed off on them.
I got another question regarding this. We probably need to make sure or be certain that these trees are actually on the township property and not any easement. That we're not trying to, okay, and give permission for easements that we don't have any jurisdiction over.
You can thank Mr. Dockett for pointing that out, yeah.
I, there's a 50-foot right-of-way for the railroad track. There's a 100-foot right-of-way for the creek. And, you know, I know we own a teeny little track going back there, but these trees are on the, I believe, on the, possibly the drink commission property. So, I thought we better be careful and give permission only for our, you know, for us, yes, but we're not giving permission to countries that are on the creek or on the railroad property. Do you know where, did you go and look where they're at there? By my place?
Yeah, it's on the other side of the track.
Yeah, well, if they're within 50 foot from the creek, they belong to the, I mean, that, they, I mean, the property is paid for us. It's an easement. So that means whoever owns it, we, we pay the property tax on the whole thing. But the railroad's got an easement and the creek's got an easement. So we have anything left.
Well, if there's anything questionable, I'll use the MDOT approach and say, we'll give up whatever right we have to it and go from there.
That's, that's what I would recommend.
Alright. Vote? All in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Oh, Ms. Elnuck says no, okay. So we have six to one. I think Mr. Ains is smart enough to go figure this out, so I'm gonna let him do it.
I move to approve the engineering proposal for aeration system at the wastewater treatment plant.
Motion by Bellinger, support by Chick. Discussion, go ahead, Ms. Bellinger.
I was curious, I didn't, I had some questions about some of this equipment, so I actually had my husband do a little research. He helped me with this to figure out, 'cause it almost sounded like, like, you know, it sounded questionable what they're talking about with regards to the energy savings and so forth. But the research shows that this variable frequency drives do, do indeed, can be tuned and work effectively and can maybe solve these issues with trying to save a little bit of money.
Okay.
Any other?
So that means you're in favor of it?
Yeah, I'm in favor, yeah, because I was questioning it, like, it seemed a little shaky, but...
Okay.
Back in 2010, we looked at this project then, and then we got a proposal then, and there was a thing with DTE that if you got it, you could pay for it, they would give you some money back if you could pay for it in energy savings in eight years. And at that time, it was 8.5 years, so we did not do it at that point. We didn't have the money in the budget. We're gonna, that, this is what I wanna do, is look at it again and see what we can do and how much it's gonna cost. I'm not sure exactly what this'll all cost.
Find out the payback period?
Yeah. And then there still are some refunds from DTE for energy savings and stuff. Plus, not only the refunds back from DTE is, if you save eight years' worth of energy, you know, it makes sense to do it even for just that, even if you don't get some refund.
Okay. Ms. Manley?
So the blower that you're replacing, does that just get trashed, or can you resell that?
No. Currently, they're, they were put in in 1978. They have 75 horsepower motors that run 24 hours a day. They're oversized, so we got them cranked down as low as we can, and we're still over aerating. So with the VFC, what it does is it slows the motor down to meet the requirements for oxygen. So we put an oxygen probe in there, and like at night when the demand goes down, we slow the blowers down, and you save that much energy then. So that's how this is supposed to work. Currently, we have, some of our pump stations, our eight-mile pump stations, we have VFDs in there. And at night, when the flow slows down at eight mile, the pumps slow down. And that saved us a lot of money over the years on those. So whenever we can use a VFD for that type of situation, that's what we do.
Is it like a capacitor?
Ms. Otto's turn.
Yeah.
You can either, you can either slow it down or...
Yeah.
Ms. Otto?
So you made the comment that, that you have energy savings. I take it because of, with the blower running 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and now you're doing intermittent?
No, we're still be running, we'll still be running it 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It just, it'll be a smaller motor.
Okay.
And it will be able to slow down, and when the motor slows down, you use less energy.
Okay.
So that's how it's gonna work.
Have you determined what the cost savings of that is?
That's what we're, that's what we're gonna try and do.
Okay.
The whole project, we get the cost savings, how much the projects are gonna cost us, and we'll go from there. When we get that all set up, then we'll come back to the board with those numbers and see if we wanna proceed with that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Well, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, that passes 7-0. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the hiring of Eric Nell, how do you pronounce it? Nah, Nahibol?
It's Nell-Hi-bol.
Nell-Hi-bol, okay. Approve the hiring of Eric Nell-Hi-bol as a paid-on-call firefighter for, at a beginning rate of $10.50 an hour.
I'll support.
Contingent on passing background check and physical?
Correct. Okay, so motion by Chalkley, support by Otto. Any discussion on this item? Mr. Dockett?
Where does it say 10.50?
Mr. Wagner told me that earlier.
I forgot to put that in the memo.
Okay, well, I, I think it needs to be put in.
It's in the motion.
What is a typical part-timer, is this part, what is a typical part-timer worker? Does it make, hard to tell?
It really depends on...
Are they available there?
Yep, everyone's different.
Alright, thank you.
He is fully trained, though, that's the bonus there.
So he's gonna be valuable, do you think, if he passes this?
Yep.
Thank you.
Is Mr. Willis needed for any other questions?
Nope. Go ahead, Mr. Willis, thank you for coming in tonight. Thanks for the reminder, Ms. Bellinger. Okay, so we have a motion? Anybody have any more questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, that passes. And then, I guess Mr. Wagner can leave also.
I do have one quick comment when you're talking about the budget. I had sent Avette a, an email and, for two changes that needed to be made from when I was in front of the board for the budget. Look, I see that one of them has been made, but one of them hasn't been.
Okay.
And so the one, if somebody will just make a note when you're talking about this, the, I need the $20,000 that I had in the 207 fund for the sale of the vehicles to be moved to the 266 fund, because those vehicles were purchased with NARC money. So when we sell them, that money has to go back into the federal NARC fund.
Okay.
And it's the 208 fund?
It's in the 207 fund, but it needs to be in the 266 fund.
260.
So, and I had sent that to her, but she must've just missed that part of the agreement.
And what's the value?
20,000.
Okay, great.
I'll mention it to her.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And, anything else for me? Thank you very much.
I don't have anything, thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations?
On your, on your new contract.
Yeah, thank you.
Your new job. Your new responsibilities.
Okay. Alright, so that passed. The next item, I'll make a motion to affirm the township manager's approval for emergency electrical work at the community center.
I'll support.
Motion by Chalkley, support by Otto. Any discussion on this item? You've all received emails at this point.
So why is this on the agenda?
Well?
Why didn't he just do it?
Yeah, it's under $5,000.
Because he's afraid to do anything without...
Well, trees, I have, you know, affiliation for trees, but, I mean, I'm just curious.
The reason I put it on the agenda was the recommendation of your township attorney that I have the board go ahead and confirm it, just for the record. But I was doing it anyway.
So why is that, Mr. Burns?
Generally, the township manager has no authority to contract. So what he did, he signed a contract in an emergency, and so it needs to be affirmed by the board after the fact.
Okay, thank you for that information.
That's a good explanation. Mr. Dockett?
I believe it's a waste of money. I've had the lights in my building for 46 years. And when I'm reading this, it says that they called the electric company, and they came out and put two new ballasts in and fixed the light. The next paragraph, he says, the manager says, they're hard to get, they're unavailable practically. Well, you know, just because you have one light burnout, and like I said, I've had one ballast burnout, I simply have a new one put in. I don't spend $2,500. That's a waste of money, thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
I understand that position, but that's part of why I notified the board by email. But I could also see the community center with the new roof burning down. Or you go to the point of having the grant done this coming year and have all the work done and have it burnt down. So I'd rather have the township pay this amount of money to avoid it. So it's really a safety net, and I did talk to our insurance company to verify that they were in agreement with this process and that they also thought the LED lights were acceptable. And I realize there's difference of opinion on it, but it seemed like the best route to go at this point.
And we did have to shut down the community center one day because of the odor, was that true?
Yeah, we had to have it shut down for one day to do the internal work. That followed two days having it shut down to do the roof.
Okay.
And then they had to go back and do a little adjusting today, I believe.
Can we call a question?
Okay. So it was motion by Chalkley, support by Otto? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so it was six to one. Mr. Dockett opposed. Okay. The next item is the road commission maintenance agreement number three. So you all know we have put in...
What happened to number five? Number five, please.
What do you mean? Oh, 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 you're right, I'm off, I'm off by one. Oh, I know, it's because it's still up.
I thought I lost another one.
Okay. Alright. I will make a motion to pass the amendment to ordinance number 1964. Well, chapter 10, article 5, section 10-102.
I support.
Ask or approve?
Pardon?
Are you saying ask or approve?
To approve.
Okay.
Well, yeah, approve ordinance, okay.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
On page, I guess I'll just call it the second page.
Yeah, Ms. Bellinger seconded.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I missed that.
Item number, dee-pa-dee-doo-doo, where is it? Number 15. Do we need to modify that?
What page are you on?
I'm on this item here, it's the, it's the, it's the dog leash ordinance thing. It was part of the, you know, my home of the numbers.
15, I don't see that.
We don't have that.
Oh, is it something I added? Oh, I'm sorry, maybe it's something I added. Do we have a copy of this?
The Bark Park?
Yeah, the rules that we wanna approve?
Well, we're not approving the rules, we're just, yeah, we're just changing the ordinance to allow the township manager to...
To add the rules.
To add the rules.
For enforcement.
Right, and what this does is it allows us, you know, every time we change something in an ordinance, we gotta go through public hearings and everything else.
So we can change the ordinance without having to go through all the public hearing potentially?
Right, we can just change the Bark Park rules.
Just the Bark Park rules, okay.
So.
Just the Bark Park what?
Well, there's more that Mr. Ains would like to share about this.
Well, just one thing. The rules as they are now would be what we'd go with, except for the part about being crimely prosecuted.
That was what I was gonna address.
Yeah.
We need to scratch that line, or at least half of that line. So that's what I was wanting to say. I'm sorry, I just had my old, my own copy, so I just tagged it on here. Number 15 says individuals failing to comply with posted rules are subject to citation, expulsion, or arrest as well as dog impound. And perhaps after... And perhaps after the word citation should be removed?
It can if the dog bites somebody.
Oh, we don't have that, is that right?
That's right. You do not have that.
So the rules need to track the ordinance, so Jennifer's retyping the rules, many, much of that's been removed in the rules, especially the arrest portion, I asked her to remove it because we can't enforce anything that's really not tracked to the ordinance. So the rules are going to say that, the, the rules are governed by the ordinance, and so it's a regurgitation of the ordinance plus on the rules, plus a notice that it's under, regulated under the ordinance, which becomes a civil infraction, not a criminal matter.
Okay, great.
So Jennifer's reworking the rules, but the ordinance is fine.
Okay, great, so if we approve this, then we're, we're good to, good to go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Dockett?
Okay, my question is, there's no page number. But, uh, let me see. One, two, third page. It says, uh, section one amendment. So are we talking only about this part? Is that the only thing we're voting on? Is the second, the section one amendment number ten, article five, section ten, one oh two?
Yes, we're, we're only adding what's underlined to the current ordinance.
Yeah, okay. But what I wanna know is there's several parts, several times on here. First page, they talk about barking dog. Barking dog. What are we talking about, barking dog? Dogs bark. I, but there's nothing in here that says we're talking about barking dogs, is that right? We're not, we're not voting on any barking dogs?
No, we're only voting on this, the lines that are underlined.
Oh, but it says, but it says, section one amendment, uh, chapter ten, article five, section ten, that is one oh two, leash dog. Shall read the following, so there's nothing to do with a barking dog?
No.
So why is it, why is it in?
Okay, chapter ten, article five, is about barking dogs and dog leashes. That's, that's the, the overall heading of, of the article five. And then the sections are underneath, and those are different rules associated with that.
So, so do we have a rule against dogs barking?
I hope so.
Yeah.
No, we do have noise ordinance, nuisance, yes.
Okay, oh, I was thinking of the dog park. Okay.
Okay, so, um, any more questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you, that passes.
We didn't cover any barking dogs in here.
No, we didn't, no, didn't talk about barking dogs, that's already... Okay, now we're at the road commission contract. So, this is really at the pleasure of the board on what to do about this. We had discussed Noller Road and getting it de-bermed, and so those are the two top dots on this page.
My move to accept the Washimaw County Road Commission Maintenance Agreement Contract Number Three is presented.
Okay, and that would be, uh, the recommendations underneath at the end?
Well, I guess we can maybe second it and then talk about what we're going to approve.
Okay. Um, yeah, because... Okay, motion by Bellinger, support by Zelnok. Okay, let's talk about it. Does everyone understand what's going on here? Uh, Ms. Otto, go ahead.
So the question that I have is, uh, on Six Mile Road, Autumn Drive to Earhart Road?
Right.
Where it says that the culvert replacement at Cary Lane is a private road approach?
Yes.
Now, why are we paying for that culvert?
No, see, these are the, we asked for estimates for different things that we were interested in, and when I got the, I went out there with, um, this district, yeah, with Mike, District Foreman, we looked at Six Mile and came, went down to Cary Lane, and that culvert that's buried is forty feet wide, but the road has widened itself out over time, and now they need a fifty-foot culvert because the one end is totally blocked. So, and it is...
But it's a private road.
It is a private road, and I don't believe we should be paying for that.
No, we shouldn't.
Right, and that's why in the recommendations here, we notify Cary Lane homeowners about that problem, get it replaced, and figure out how we're going to assess for the, those costs.
So why, this is, so this was confusing for me.
Sure.
Because it says estimate total project cost thirty thousand nine, nine hundred dollars.
Yep.
Estimate without Cary Lane culvert twenty-three, three hundred.
Right.
So we're, we should be doing the work without the culvert in there, and the, and the culvert work should be still done by...
Right. The, the challenge...
By the homeowner.
The challenge we're having here, though, is we have quotes for much more money than we have set aside for this. So we were planning on forty thousand dollars, and now we've got quotes for twelve thousand eight hundred for North Noller, so that would be, you know, out of the forty thousand dollars.
A total of fifty-two four on these sheets.
And then, and, yeah, and then we've got the Autumn Drive to Earhart, and we've got Six Mile from Earhart to Rushton, and I'm looking at this going, oh my, uh, this is way more money than we even had, uh, set aside for this. So, I tried to figure out how are we gonna get down to forty thousand dollars unless the board would like to go higher? And so my recommendations were to improve the two Noller Road segments at a cost of twelve thousand eight hundred, um, notify Cary Lane property owners of the culvert problem, have the road commission replace it, and correct the drainage that's around there, there's, there's drainage problems, um, because we really need to correct drainage problems. And, um, and work out the assessment for the costs. And then we have, I was suggesting allocating twenty thousand dollars to improve drainage township-wide, and that could be anywhere we're having problems, and then an additional amount of limestone, um, to raise the road, you know, or fill in potholes as we have it. Now, we already have set aside nineteen thousand three hundred dollars for township-wide limestone, so that would, seven thousand two hundred would be a little more, uh, added on to that. So anyway, that, that was just my recommendation, and, and then I thought, well, the action requested was to authorize the township manager, the public safety director, and me, and, you know, any input from board members, uh, to work with the road commission to complete the selection of projects at an additional cost not to exceed forty thousand dollars. So, really, that we could pick and choose out of this however you want, but, um, we had only set aside forty thousand dollars, and you can see how much more money there, they've got here, so...
Okay, the, the question still holds, though.
Go ahead.
The way this reads is, are we paying the Cary Lane culvert upfront and having them reimburse us?
We have to figure out the logistics of that. Will the road commission...
No, then I'm not even gonna vote on it.
Do you want us to pay for it and get reimbursed?
No.
No.
Cause they won't do it.
Can't we do an SAD?
Well, I don't know, maybe Mr. Burns has an idea.
An SAD, they would have to agree to it.
Well, we could just avoid the Cary Lane thing right now.
We could avoid Cary Lane, there's nine houses on there.
An SAD on a private road?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there is a specific statute that townships can do a special assessment district for maintenance and capital improvements on private roads, but the property owners have to agree to it.
Right. I mean, that would be the way I would do it, they would have to agree, and we would do an SAD? And if they don't agree, I guess they don't travel down their road?
Well, what do we do then? What, what happens is, then we have flooding problems, basically they, it alters the drainage of a lot of Six Mile, when it won't go down the, the ditches and go through the culverts into the wetland that they have set up for it.
Isn't that like a, I mean, a road commission, water res...
That's not legal either.
Isn't that the water resources to handle that? And say you, I mean, can they not make them do that, since it's impacting a public road?
So, so, that is a road commission issue. I know for, and I'm just bringing it into our subdivision, which is a private road, we had a culvert that collapsed as well, the road commission says you gotta fix it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we think so.
And we had to.
Yeah.
Um, nobody charged for it, the road commission says you just gotta fix it because it impacted the railroad, it impacted the stream behind the, the golf course and everything, so we did it.
Do you have a homeowner's association that did it?
Yes, we do.
I don't know if these nine homes do.
Oh, we paid extra, we had to pay extra for how many years? Yep, about seven, eight years, we had to pay extra.
So, my recommendation is just that we get it done and figure out how, you know, and let the, um, the township manager, you know, whoever get it done properly through the road commission and drain commission if necessary. But we can do the rest of it if you want.
I, I don't have any problem with the rest of it, other than Cary Lane.
I agree, I think we should, uh, let the road commission look into Cary Lane, and we could tackle the, uh, Noller Roads and some of the Six Mile.
The whole township shouldn't be responsible for a private road, right?
Of course not.
But, you know, honestly, um, I really wish we would go back to the way we used to do this, where we had...
Exactly, this is why it's confusing.
This is really confusing and convoluted, and, um, a lot of things going on. Put a bunch of projects out there, pick the projects we want and go with that. I don't, I would hope not to see something like this next year.
Well, next year, we can have a pre-meeting and have the road commission come here, it can be, um, we can post it, and it can be a more informal, and that's what a lot of boards do, and so the questions can go back and forth, and it's, it's just a lot more, it's easier to, to actually communicate in that way, rather than come to a board meeting like this, and you, we put them up there at the pedestal, and then...
Why not?
Then chew them up.
That's your job.
Yeah, but, but it's, it really, Ton, you, you, you went to that meeting with the road commission, didn't you find that very valuable, to sit there and be able to have this back and forth?
Oh, absolutely, there was no doubt it was, very much so.
But we can have it here.
Yeah, we can have it here, yeah. But it doesn't have to be during a big, during a meeting.
We can do both, we can have like a pre-meeting that's open to the public, and then we can have them come and do the presentation.
Yeah, the public should be able to comment on the roads.
They should, and they should understand how the funding works and, or, AKA, doesn't work.
And we learned a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, you can have a, to me, a discussion back and forth about road projects, and, you know, maybe say this is why we're picking that, but I do believe the board should come, or the road commission should come to a board meeting and explain it, it should be documented, the material should be handed out and explained, so the public understands how road funding works, and like I said, or doesn't work.
And I, and I did have the opportunity to speak to the road commission director, and she said that she wanted to try something different, but this isn't, um, it, it does, it doesn't hold well with transparency of what we're trying to do in the township. It doesn't work well.
Okay, well, we'll try, we'll do it differently next year.
And, and my concern is, like, we're allocating twenty thousand to improve drainage, drainage, where?
Yeah.
I don't like this nebulous, you know, like somewhere.
Nebulous type of stuff.
I want, we're gonna do this, this is our issue, we're gonna fix this, and we're gonna allocate money to this, so I, I don't like that.
Okay, well, let's, let's fix Noller Road, and let's fix, uh, Six Mile from Autumn Drive to Earhart Road, leaving out Cary Lane, we'll let, we'll let the road commission figure out how to get that part done.
You wanna do, or you wanna wait on that one and do the six, Earhart to Rushton, until the road commission comes back with something from, from Autumn Lane?
I think I'd prefer to do the latter, just like the Six Mile to the Earhart Road to Rushton.
Six Mile, Earhart, uh, 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 oh, so, okay.
The lower one, the last bullet.
And keep Autumn, Autumn Lane off, until they figure it out?
Until it gets figured out, and we know the whole process and the, the, how it's gonna, cause I'm not sure it makes sense for us to fix it if the ditch doesn't get, or the culvert doesn't get fit, then it's pretty money.
We're just throwing bad money, good money after bad.
I don't, okay, it, it, it doesn't matter to me, we can do both of those, uh, that you're talking about, Earhart to Rushton, it's just that they are starting at Dixborough, and they're working their way east. So they're going from Dixborough to, uh, Autumn Lane already, and they're rebuilding, that's an eighty-some thousand dollar project, they're rebuilding that whole area because it, it's a mess. And then, um, if they were to continue on, they would go all the way to, uh, Earhart Road, but the Cary, Cary Lane comes off between Autumn Drive and Earhart Road, so there is that culvert issue.
But again, if the culvert isn't working, is that not impacting the road, and do you want, and then do you wanna put money on fixing it until the culvert's fixed? That's kind of the...
You can always come back.
Alright, I'm, I'm gonna...
Yeah, we can always come back, and maybe we'll just add more to the budget.
Well, we don't have to pay for it.
I know that, what, what do you mean, we don't have to pay for the culvert?
We would have to pay, we won't have to pay for the culvert, but the rest of the road here.
We're, we're not gonna have to pay for the culvert anyway.
I get that.
No, we're talking about adding more money on for the road repair.
Alright, so which, which pieces do you want?
The Noller, and then the Six Mile, Earhart to Rushton. But I see your point, because now you have a gap of road that hasn't been improved, and it's about a quarter mile or a third of a mile on Six Mile.
Yeah, there's a whole bunch like that.
So I understand that concern, but the situation still remains, we would have to have, uh, the, um, Cary Lane residents approve that culvert before we would go forward on that.
Yeah, I agree.
Unless we can force them?
I don't know.
Well, there's a lot of cost associated to mobilization, and, you know, um, once they get going on it, it's easier to keep going than to break it off and then have to come back, but, I mean, but that's okay.
Is it right, Mr. Burns, we can, you said that there is a, we can do an SAD on them? Private road? Without their approval?
They have to agree.
They have, typically, they would have to petition the board for us to create a special assessment district.
Okay, alright.
With a, with a budget.
And everything.
Could we make them dig it out themselves?
Could, could you do what?
Can we make the Cary Lane people dig it out and make it forty feet again?
Uh, I'm not sure I know enough about whether you could sue somebody to make them do that? I don't know off the cuff.
Okay, well, anyway, Ms. Manley?
So we haven't talked to anybody on Cary Lane yet, so they're not aware of this?
No, they are not aware of this.
Okay.
Alright, let's leave that one off for now, then.
Okay, so the amended, uh, agreement says to approve the Noller Road work for forty-three hundred, Noller Road work at five to seven for eighty-five hundred, and the Six Mile road work, Earhart to Rushton for sixteen-three.
Okay. And then throw the rest into limestone? Or drainage?
I don't wanna do drainage without knowing the drainage.
Yeah, I would like to do the, the seventy-two hundred is not a problem.
Right.
I don't have a problem with that.
I mean, again, if drainage, if someone identifies, and by this time, we should've had this area or that area within the township identify as needing help, as opposed to, well, we just fix drainage, I don't know what that means.
Okay, well, the district foreman says there's particularly bad sections of Kearney, Spencer, and Noller, where improved drainage would be helpful. So, um, he knows where they are. Oh, well, they don't usually do this address, or this address, or whatever, but, um, I was...
So, I mean, they wouldn't just indicate that, you know, Kearney at this section, Spencer at this section, and Noller at this section?
See, I've actually seen them just, I've seen them actually dump some as needed, and it may not be a lot, but it's a little, and, and they dump it where it's needed, and it does help, they've done this on my stretch of road, and it's made a big improvement.
Right.
It wasn't, I don't even think anybody knew about it, except if you drove that road and saw that, oh, there's some fresh limestone there, and then...
And that's what they do with the limestone that we have already contracted for, the nineteen thousand three hundred, last year we contracted for over forty thousand dollars in limestone, and this year, we only have nineteen thousand three hundred, so we're, we don't have as much limestone set aside for this coming year. Um, so we could add, add the remainder of the forty thousand to, um, the limestone, okay? So, we are, we are at two Noller... So, we are, we are at two Nollers, the Six Mile from Earhart to Rushton, and then we will add the remainder of the forty thousand dollars to the township-wide limestone, whatever that comes out to.
Support.
Okay, so we need to, um, withdraw the other, uh, motion. We had a Bellinger-Zelnock motion.
So, we could discuss.
So, we could discuss it, so.
Ms. Bellinger, would you withdraw your prior motion?
I could withdraw, yeah.
I could withdraw the prior motion.
Okay.
Want me to make another motion to approve these?
Yes, go ahead.
You already did, right?
All right. I move that we approve the Washtenaw County Road Commission Maintenance Agreement that will include, um, Noller Road North Territorial to Five Mile for four thousand three hundred dollars, Noller Road Five Mile to Seven Mile for eight thousand five hundred dollars, Six Mile Road Earhart to Rushton for sixteen thousand three hundred dollars, in a remainder figure of?
Ten thousand nine hundred.
Ten thousand nine hundred for township-wide limestone.
Okay. I'll second that unless Ms. Zelnock.
You can authorize the attorney, no, not the, authorize the manager, I guess, to sign the agreement? Was this what was needed?
They always have the town, they always have the supervisor sign.
Okay.
All right, okay.
That'd be great.
Okay, any more discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Ains.
Just one item is that we did get the first billing for this year's work and it's a total of twenty-three thousand one seventy-nine. But they did one dust control application, the Six Mile Road, Dixborough Road, uh, intersection work, and that's the joint project with Salem Township and about seven thousand worth of limestone.
We don't have any joint projects with Salem Township this year.
Oh, that was the prior year.
That was last year.
Okay. At the intersection there where you and Ton and I looked at it with them. So, they are moving ahead with your prior approvals for those work.
Yeah, okay.
Last year.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Well, took a little bit, but thank you very much.
Certainly, we need a better process next year.
Yeah.
This was.
Yep. We, we didn't get it in until very late. Ms. Manley?
In the meantime, can we either also the road commission work with these people on Kerry Lane to try to get that figured out?
Yes, we need to do something there, yeah.
Can we authorize having the township manager work with Kerry Lane?
Okay.
As it is.
Okay, so will we need a motion? Okay, we'll make the motion.
Or I could, I could volunteer some time and drop things off with them. If you have some paper form you want to drop off with them or reach out to them because they're just around the corner from me.
It might be some legal kind of paperwork. I don't know.
I think the road com, yeah, let the manager handle it.
Yeah, okay. So, I'll make a motion to have Mr. Ains, um, handle the communication with Kerry Lane about their culvert and getting it replaced. Okay, motion by Chocley, support by Bellinger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I made a motion.
This were a standalone motion that you didn't know anybody was talking about.
I made a motion to have Mr. Ains take, uh, communicate with the Kerry Lane homeowners about getting their, um, culvert replaced.
Do we have like a date?
Um, yeah, well, how about, uh, within the next thirty days? Bellinger.
What would that entail?
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Mr. Dockett had a question. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Dockett.
What would that entail, what you're asking to do?
He, he needs to, he needs to figure out how we're going to get that culvert replaced. By talking to the homeowners and working with the road commission.
Who's responsible?
Who's responsible?
Are they, I know, I mean, of the culvert, is there, is, is there, are they in a drain district?
What?
Do they pay into a drain district where?
This is, this is, I don't know.
It's a private road.
It's a private road. It goes under the end of their road.
Why should we be paying?
We shouldn't be paying. We're not paying. Right.
Wonderful.
Okay.
We got your back, Mr. Dockett.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Goals and priorities.
Uh, I don't think we voted.
Oh, do, oh, yeah, did we vote?
No.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, thank you, seven zero. Sorry about that.
On the goals and priorities, at the last meeting, the board had suggested that you provide comments on those and I did get two board members gave me comments, but basically they entailed taking this complicated chart and kind of throwing it out and picking a few, I think each of them gave me three goals. So, maybe there's four, five, six altogether. Uh, but that would be my recommendation too, that you, you narrow down the number of goals. You then tell me how to, you know, what you want to accomplish and then I start working on how you fund parts of it, how you put a timetable together, what sort of legal action might be needed to accomplish them, what kind of marketing plan, however you want me to go with that, but if you do identify those broader issues, I think that would work. And on your chart before, there was actually several that could have been a big goal with several sub-aspects to it, um, as opposed to having, you know, so many separate goals.
Pick three to five goals that you, sending them to the manager.
Well, okay, I already got them.
Then we decide which ones we want.
Right now? What, okay. I don't know what to do with this, Mr. Ains. I'm lost.
Well, at this point, um, you know, I have six goals that have been identified by board members. And what I'm referring to though is that I don't have the feedback from others, but I think the way to proceed would be for me to distribute those six goals to the board and then that might be a basis for other ones to come up with, you know, either different goals or variations on those. But I think what I'm, I'm referring to is the goals that were adopted about a year ago. There was no commitment that there were four votes by the board to proceed with all those items. And a number of them weren't even listed as priorities, got no points at all when you did your voting tally. And then a number of those were accomplished and so they shouldn't need to be on. And then there's goals that are ongoing that you'll never see a, a conclusion because they're part of the normal routine operation of the township, like setting the, the, uh, the amount of fund balance. That's something you look at every year and you're actually looking at every meeting. But there's some of these that can't be accomplished unless there's a monetary amount applied to that. And without knowing exactly which goals you want to go, then I don't know how to evaluate or come back to you. So, I think it's a, a series of things, but you are dealing with the fact that the budget is before you now. It does need to be adopted over this meeting and the next one, but it can always be amended. And so, if you identify goals and identify how to proceed, what I would recommend based on my experience or based on the amount of money, uh, and you say, yes, there's something we really want to do, but we did budget for it, you can always amend the budget. Or if there's areas that we put in the budget that you at a later point decide, or we, through investigation conclude we don't need as much as what you budgeted, then it can be reallocated as well.
So, I have a question. I mean, we've talked about this at the meetings many times, so, Ms. Ains, what are the top five things you're working on? Like, what, what have you, you know, looking at this document, I mean, can you identify the top five things or the top? I think Ms. Chick has used three. Can you identify like the three top things you're working on?
Well, obviously, right now because of the timetable, it's the, uh, the budget process. If you don't have money, you can't accomplish very much. The second one is the North Village Project, which you've identified a potential user, a developer, uh, through the RFQ process. I've also mentioned to the board, there's another potential one, but it's not to the point of making it public. And the committee met today to go over kind of ground rules as to how to proceed. And so, to me, that's a high priority. It's a major investment you've made in terms of money and time and energy and, and if you get somebody going in there that accomplishes your goals, I think it would be a big boost to the community. And in spite of some opposition to it, the, I still think, as I've recommended for two years now, that the retention tank is something to look at. Now, all you've approved to date is that we take the first little baby step. And so, the next step is me coming back to you with a request for qualifications, um, because it seemed like the board wanted to at least consider more than one engineering group. But I want to make sure if I go into that, that you've bought into the process because if I go out and get RFQs from different people and then I bring them back and it's not what you really wanted, then that's a loss of energy and time and so forth too. But, uh, so, you know, that's an area where there's definitely, in my opinion, reflected by the engineer, reflected by the operator of the plant, that there is that need. And, uh, yeah, it's interesting, the dollar amounts that get thrown around and maybe some people won't take kindly to this, but, uh, my church is looking at a three million dollar expansion project and it's only got a thousand members, but they've accomplished it because it's something that the people have bought into. And the question here is, do you have enough people buying into it that the board feels comfortable moving ahead? And if you don't, you can call it quits at any point. But if you know upfront you're going to, there's no reason to spend the two hundred thousand. But I think you can start the process with a much smaller part of that and bring those back at each step and if you decide you don't want to proceed, that's fine, but, uh, you at least, I think, need to, to proceed. And then they tie into the whole economic development stability. I think your downtown has been identified as a high priority and the North Village Project and the downtown both tie together a lot in my view. And I think you've identified that through your, uh, prior studies for the downtown, for the North Village. So, those are the kind of things that I'm working on, but in the meantime, I'm working on the building department evaluation, which I know I promised by today, but I've told you I'll have by the next meeting. And, uh, and there's a number of other things that are ongoing. Hopefully, that helps some.
Thank you. So, and, I mean, I've said this, communication. I mean, we, I think, have to have a good communication to our residents and even amongst our, amongst the board members. So, I'd like to see, you know, something, a little bit more with the website, making sure our board packages are complete and just that we have good process and procedures so that things are getting done.
I do have a meeting next week with your current website provider. They had indicated they could do additional work for you, but I don't know what they have in mind exactly or what price, and then I'll bring that back to you as well.
Great, okay. Mr. Dockett?
Um, it kind of fits in with what we're doing here. Is there any work on Seventy-Five Barker? Any interest, any? Anybody looking?
Yes, I had received Friday and I sent out to the board by email. I don't know if that got copied to you yet. There is a proposal pending. Your attorney had advised that it does need to come back to the board for either rejection or acceptance, that we should have the commercial realtor here to explain his perspective on it and the value offered and so forth.
When, sir? When will that be?
That would be at the next board meeting.
Okay, the reason I'm asking is because if we're looking for money, we, we might have a windfall, we don't know. So, that's why I ask.
Yes, the realtor also contacted me to get the key to the building because they've got another party that they assure me is a different party that they're going to show it to tomorrow.
Please, please keep us informed.
Yes, I am trying to.
Because I'm very interested about that.
And in addition, there's another party that's interested that has asked me about a list of architects or engineers and typically you don't recommend anyone that way, but on your planning commission website, there's a list of those that have worked with the planning commission, the township before, and I've referred to them so that they want to have a, something they can bring back and present.
Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome, sir.
Next steps? Next steps, yeah. What do you want us to do, Mr. Ains?
Well, I'll get out to you this week the, uh, the six goals that have been identified by some board members. I'll add to it and then I'd like to get feedback from you. And if you tell me something's not worth dealing with or we're not got the money for or whatever, you know, then that's fine. But I think that needs to be resolved fairly soon in the coming budget year.
Can you send us out tomorrow or the next day?
It'd be Thursday. I have another commitment tomorrow.
Okay, so we'll expect something from Mr. Ains on Thursday and when, and we should return our thoughts to you by?
I'd like it by Monday to give you the weekend to consider.
Okay.
When's your vacation, sir? When is your vacation?
I had asked for a week in July, third, second week of July, I believe it is, and.
We got a little done, thank you.
Yeah, and then I, it asked for a couple of days in August. But I was waiting to see if you extended the agreement because if you didn't, I'd have all kinds of time off in August, so.
You're stuck with us.
And you're stuck with me.
Yeah, so there, that's all you need from us tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Number eight is a discussion on fiscal year budget, potential amendments?
Okay.
On the budget, um, last year, we talked to the board at, to the June meetings and the board indicated that even though that'd been past practice, that didn't give you enough time to examine the budget. This year, as we've been stressing, the board had asked for it in advance, so we've had it before you for April, May, and June now. So, you've had a total of six regular meetings that could be discussed and one special meeting you held. At this point, you've had the public hearing. We're recommending that you, um, go forward with something final if you want to do a few minor things, but basically to get it approved at the next board meeting in two weeks. And then, as I said, it's easy enough to amend if there's something that has been overlooked or we need more investigation on. But at the meetings, the last two years, two eighteen, two seventeen, um, I looked back and the controller was not available or didn't attend those meetings and I had to attend last meeting to go through the detail with you. And then I tried to focus on the goals and the, um, the capital improvements. And as I've put in my summary for this meeting, um, I've had the same thing done except in writing. I had to go through and look at what changed from last year and highlight those items so that you could see. But the major changes are the capital improvement fund. Those are the big. Those are the big ticket items. And one of those, by error, I had put down as a next year project. And that's the roof on the community center. It got done quicker than we anticipated. So that would be an adjustment next week out of this year's budget, and it'd be reduction out of next.
Did that come in under budget?
Yes, it did. So it wasn't quite the 14,000 the board approved. It was something under that.
Good deal.
And I think it looks good, and the inspector said it looked good from his standpoint. The items that I've listed under general fund, we had identified sources of money. The roadwork, we've just discussed. The Six Mile Culvert is a prior project that you're paying on over time. The Walker Drain is another project you did. It's payable over time. The park improvements for North Village are intended to give you some seed money, if you need it, to plan for some of the public amenities at that location. And if you don't need to, it can be allocated elsewhere. I mentioned the roof. And the land acquisition proposed is the ongoing process the board has been undergoing as lots behind this building come up for tax sale. That you've been accumulating those for a future park that's identified in your park and recreation plan. But I don't know that you'll be spending that much.
Ms. Otto?
At one time, we, for the land acquisition behind the Public Safety Building, we did have, we did request to have, I think, Parks and Rec, I'm not sure, and I don't know how long ago this was, to send out letters to the property owners to see if they would want to donate those properties. Did we get any response?
They, I don't believe they've done that. No. I brought it up at one of their meetings. We were going to do it. There's a draft letter, but we have not done that.
I'd be happy to do that. I wasn't aware that was an option.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Because they could take it as a write-off if they weren't going to pay property tax on it.
Yeah, I didn't know about that.
We did have a gentleman come in a while back and wanted to know how he could drive to his property. And we told him, take a boat.
Did you tell him very carefully?
Yes, yes. Mr. Dockett?
Why we're talking about it, I don't believe we should buy anything in Horseshoe Lake. My opinion, I mean, they have an association. It'll never, it'll never have anything to do with the township, because it's all owned by the association. So that's my opinion.
Okay, Ms. Bellager, go ahead.
My question was on the 10,000, did we already have a figure come back from, I guess, the county or the state on how much this year we may be needing if we do purchase?
We have a letter, and I don't recall the amount.
I didn't think it was quite that much, but I don't know if anybody knew. And then I want to second what he said as well as about the Horseshoe Lake. Like, it'd be nice to get those back to Horseshoe Lake, those pieces that we do have.
Ms. Chick?
Yeah, I did comment at a previous board meeting that one of the members of the Horseshoe Lake had said that if any of those properties come up on the tax rolls or for sale, that they want to have first chance at them. So let them have that. We need to notify them that they're available before we consider buying anything there.
Well, they'll have to pay for them. When do they have their meetings? First something of the month, right?
Yeah, and the other thought is because we do own property there, there was question as, should we, the township, be paying the association dues for those properties that we own?
Right. We own a lot, too. A lot.
There's the other consideration, if you pay on the dues, do you have voting rights on the association?
Exactly.
And then the whole township has access? Not good.
Give them, give them away. We're going to get them.
Yeah.
Oh, 11,000? Okay.
$11,000?
Yeah, but I don't.
I don't know. I don't think they're all Horseshoe Lake.
No. Four of them are in the summer homes.
But those aren't, yeah, it's not broken out, though.
Well, what's 11,000, the total for this year?
That's the minimum bids on all the township properties going up for auction.
Yeah, but in your report, you said that you, you said that it was returned back, that we weren't going to do any of them. And usually, the board determines, these were, in your report, you said, in the supervisor's report, you said the assessor believes that the three parcels and others in the same area are not for public person. Public purpose, so the parcels required wetland areas were returned to tax roll.
He put them all back on the tax roll. I disagree. And I've had some.
And really, that's really up to the board. Isn't it up to the board?
No.
No, it's up to the assessor.
I mean, if we're going to purchase them and everything, but he put them on the tax. These were properties we already owned.
We already owned, yeah.
And he put them on the tax roll. No, I was talking about if there were any that needed to be purchased.
Oh, some of them we should be selling. You know, not the, not the Horseshoe Lake ones.
Okay.
He put some of the lots that the township owns back on the tax.
Back on the tax roll?
No.
He did.
That's not right.
Right, and so that's why part of my report at the end is I want Paul.
I couldn't understand it.
Yeah, to actually give us the straight scoop on this. So I'm going to make a motion at, when my report comes up, to do that. So anyway, continue with the budget, I guess, here.
Okay. So the second category is the public service building. And this is a designated fund from the lease of space on the second floor. And what the board had indicated is those monies should be dedicated to the maintenance of this property and the building. We had mentioned about doing concrete work at the safety building, township hall. We also had talked about evaluating and improving the heating and air conditioning system. And we did go back and look at this with the treasurer and the controller. And we are slightly over the projection. So as I put here, my recommendation is on the heating and air conditioning, that you drop that down, take the 40,000 minus the 7460, so you don't have a deficit budget in that area. But again, these things may be adjusting, depending on what the results are of it. And I have gotten two concrete beds, and they're quite diverse. And we've got another one we're expecting. But we're thinking that what we need to do is identify with the chief and what the minimum amount would be to be safe and address issues first before we go to everything that has need to fix.
Ms. Chick?
So I don't think the board has actually seen where all this concrete work needs to be done. I mean, we've heard that it needs to be done, but where?
I walked around and saw the.
There's a lot of little.
Yeah.
It's all in this property here, and that's where the money was designated by the board. So there are properties that, the first time, with the first contractor, the chief and I and Jennifer walked with the contractor. Second time, Tom and I walked it. But, and then I've had Dan Willis take a look at one of the catch basins, two of the catch basins, to see if they needed work out front here at the fire station. So, you know, they're kind of work in progress. What I was going to do with the chief now is to identify him with orange paint and then have the contractors give me a replot price based on what specifically is outlined. But it falls into a couple of different categories. One is the approach to this building on the front side towards Main Street. There's a number of potential trip hazards there. In the rear, there's some settling and different things that deal with the entryways to the fire station off of the back part. This is for individual person doors. The chief has also talked about, there's a section that's highly broke up on the north end. It's concrete around a manhole, but it also ties into the garbage storage area. And we'd like to ramp it. Right now, it's a curb situation, so we can only use the roller carts. But we'd like to get into having an actual dumpster for that purpose. And then the two catch basins are out front here at the fire station. And my concern was, since both catch basins had a lot of cracking around them, were they stable enough to bear the weight of the trucks? And so that, the one, Dan felt was fine. It just was an appearance issue. The other one, he thought was substantive.
Ms. Bellager?
Do we need, can we make a motion to reduce this one tonight? The public safety, that you recommend reduced by maybe 7,500? Is this something that we need to do or should do? Okay, I would like to do that. Would move to reduce the heating and air conditioning improvement study by $7,500 in the public safety rental fund, the allocation for the budget.
Okay, support. Motion by Bellager, support by Zelnok. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed?
No.
Okay. That passes 6-1. Dockett? No. Okay.
And just one final comment on this. The rental funds over five years, which is the lease, should generate about $100,000 on that effect. And again, the intent is to do maintenance on the building and grounds. So this actually saves the general fund, the fire fund, and the police fund from subsidizing those kind of improvements. Going on to the wastewater plant, we've already talked about professional services on the retention tank. The irrigation system was what was requested to be designed by the board, approved tonight. And then there's a variety of other improvements that have been identified by Dan. And if the board wants, I can give you those at a future date. But those are all funded out of the wastewater fund. So all these are cash. They're not borrowing. They're trying to live within your means, but take care of what you need to do at this time, in our opinion. With that, I would recommend that the board go ahead and move to, place the budget on the agenda for final action next time, unless there's issues that you have, questions, or concerns about.
Ms. Zelnok?
So one thing we have to add is $20,000 more to the elections. On page six. So right now, it, I believe it's just showing the election specialists at 28,000. And the base estimates of the 22 election workers slash four elections of 20,000 is missing. So that'll bring the total up to 48,000. And the bottom line up to 66,000.
You say page six?
Yep.
Page six, yeah.
Under salaries?
Yes.
Can you have the numbers one more time?
For me, right now, it's at 28,000. It is really just showing the election specialists. And the 22 election workers and four election amount is missing, which is another 20,000. So that'll bring that up to 48,000 in the bottom line, up to 66,000. 692.
Okay, I saw Ms. Chick's hand up first, but I'll take yours since it's still up now. Ms. Otto, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to remind, remind us that we have to include the correction that Chief Wagner recommended.
Correction?
It was to change.
20,000 from 207, move it to 266.
Yeah.
For the sale of the vehicles.
And where is that in here, do you know?
We'll find it.
Yeah, I mean, I just think you can just move it.
Yeah, but I wanted to make it noted that we, I knew about it.
Sure. He told us the numbers, so anyway.
Yeah.
I see it, okay.
207 to 266.
Right, yeah.
20,000 for the sale of the asset.
20,000.
So I mean, my thought, though, as part of me, should, you know, we should take out the 20 grand for the park improvements until we know what they are.
Yeah, that's, that's why my hand was up.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I mean, certainly, I mean, if you look at our fund balance, we better take that off as a goal.
We don't even know if we'll need it.
Right.
And then the land acquisition for the proposed park behind the safety building, are any of those properties within that 10,000 Horseshoe Lake properties?
Yes.
Yes.
There's a price of 10,000 on these lots.
No, no, just in, no, no. Just that we're allocating that because there's multiple lots that it could be. I think last year, we spent around 8,000.
83, yeah, 8303 or something.
Yeah, that's around 8,000.
Yeah, it is.
So do we need a motion to remove the park improvements?
Yes.
Okay, well, I move to remove the park improvements for North Village at this time, the 20,000 dollar support.
Motion by Bellager, support by Zelnok. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. That passes 7-0. One item I noticed in here, I know we like our code enforcement officer, but we did increase his hours to.
What page are you on?
I know we did, but what page is it?
Specifically, I was looking at what was given to us by Ms. Patrick. So code enforcement is on page three of nine in.
And it's on page 12 in the detail.
Is it? Oh, good. Thank you. Yeah.
Almost about fourth on the bottom.
Page 12.
Okay, page 12, yeah. Which had increased his significantly, you know, like 19,760, because we were taking it from 20 hours to 30. And he, he himself says he doesn't think there's enough work to do 30 hours. So maybe we cut it back to 25 or something.
I'd support that.
And then if, if it becomes more important, you know, and we have more later, we could always increase it, but.
I.
What do you think?
I thought the, the motion was up to 30 hours, is that he's not required to do 30 hours.
Right, that's true, but what?
But we had a budget for it.
Because you put the money in the budget for the worst case.
Yeah.
So what if we cut it in half, at least?
I like 35.
What?
30. You have 30 cents here, right?
30.
No, I.
No, 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 no. So he's at 30 hours, and he works 20 regularly. That's what the budget. I'm saying maybe do 25 hours and then cut the 19,760 would be, you know, half of that. And then obviously, the social security goes along with it. So maybe just do 25 hours, so it gives another 10 grand into the budget.
Right, so it'd be $30,000 instead of 48,000.
And then if there's more needed, we could do that or adjust it as we go.
Yeah.
I support or move to amend his hours to 25 hours max.
Okay.
So brings it down to 3250?
I was thinking it would only take it down to about 30,000.
So we're doing 25.
If you're doing 25 hours.
Yeah, go ahead and calculate it out and figure it out.
Yeah, times 52 weeks.
Well.
325.
Yeah, 325.
Okay, 325.
You don't want to shortcut them.
The motion is to reduce the hours for code enforcement from 30 down to 25.
Up to?
Yeah, up to 25. Yes, that's correct.
Up to.
Well, yeah, I guess it's up from 20 to 25.
No, but that doesn't mean he has to work that many hours.
It's up to, right, okay, up to 25 hours.
Right. Because if he wants to. Because if he wants to only work 20, he works 20.
Yeah.
You're not forcing him to work hours that he doesn't necessarily need to work.
Exactly.
He knows better than we do.
That's correct. Okay. So who seconded Ms. Bellinger's?
I'll second.
Oh, okay. Ms. Zelnok seconded it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. That passes.
I think, you know, just in general, again, what we need to look at is our building department, right? Because next year, we need to look at our fees because it'll be running a deficit, pretty much. So that needs to be a priority to at least look on.
Fee schedule. That was one of my calls.
That's what the study on the building, zone etc. is leading up to. And then I also, again, talked to Paul Lippens today about the fees and what they might need to adjust to if we were to do something. And probably we should get into a moderate increase per year as opposed to flattening up and so forth.
I had a couple of questions.
Mr. Docket.
But if we gave it to the county, we would have 6,169 dollars, because the county would do it for free. We would be getting all this money that we don't need to spend, let the county do it.
That's part of what the controller is working for me on about comparing the cost of revenues and expenditures under both actions.
But it's short.
Couple of questions. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Bellinger.
Um, one might be a simple answer. I'm just curious on page 12 that we were just on, why is it 40% under the very second, well, I guess it's the first line, zoning and salaries? 40% of building planning, zoning salary? Why is it 40%? I guess, I don't need a long answer. Maybe it's divided and the 60% is somewhere else. I'm not really sure what that means.
That's Mary's position. And it's allocated to different.
So her, her time is like partially, she's paid from this account and that account combined?
Right.
Okay. The next question would be on 13, the road funding. Is it, are we going to have to adjust these numbers in here or is this something that that's going to do since we just approved that?
Right. The, that, this had the 40,000 in it.
Okay.
So.
Because I did notice it appears as though we have a little less allocated to the roads than we did in 1819.
We did. So it's up to the board if they want to increase that. We had the paths and the sidewalks last year, which, you know, also contributed to the 192,000. And then if you, you see the, the budget, the 49,113 dollars under the 1819 amended budget. And then under the 1920, it shows 28,000. And that's because of the way we did our contract this year. They took our, our, that roadwork is brining. And so it's really about $55,000. And they took our match and applied it to that.
That year?
Yeah. So that's why it looks like it's so much cheaper.
I see. So the other part of the 55 match is actually the 20, was it 2800, 28,000, I mean?
Yeah.
Is that kinda?
About 27 was applied to our road improvements. When last time it was, all of it was applied to the road improvements.
Okay. I think I know what you're saying. It's split between, you're trying to say it's split between the years or somehow, or something?
Yeah. It, it's just divided up differently. But it's true that we're about $10,000 less for roads next year. So.
And I, I would like to see, you know, obviously more.
Yeah. The following year is going to be a lot better. We're going to be done paying for the six-mile culvert. We're going to be done with the Walker drain. So, you know, a lot of that money, $51,000 of what we've allocated this year is going to pay those bills that we incurred when the six-mile culvert went out and when we got the Walker.
Well, I understand that part, but some of the questions, I guess, I mean, I'm, I'm going to 1819, the amended budget, I guess. We had a bit more allocated there than we do here. And I don't know whether there's a 49,000 for the road work on that, but yet 28 there.
Right. Non-motorized path. Last year, the, the entire cost of the brining was 49,113 dollars. This year, the entire cost of the brining is 55,000 and something.
Okay.
This year. And what the road commission did, you know, we're getting a match from the road commission for regular stuff for about $54,000. They took the match, the $54,000, which last year we applied to the road improvements, they took the match and applied it half to the brining.
Okay. That's why that number is less.
That's why it looks funny.
Okay. I think it makes sense to me now.
We could change that so it doesn't look funny, but.
So the match, if some of it went from the brining and maybe less of it's going to come, because it's the same, about $55,000.
Yeah. It's all in the same, you know, and amount, so.
I had a couple of other questions on here, but I can wait till, let our people ask questions. Or you took care of the one. I think we already took care of the ones, the questions I had on this other form.
Okay. Anybody else have questions here? Is every, is there anyone interested, everyone interested in taking a look at Chief Wagner's salary? Not tonight? Maybe coming up?
Okay. We can always amend the budget.
All right. Let's do that. So any more questions on the budget?
I would certainly entertain some form of additional compensation for Chief Wagner, but as to when, I don't know.
Yeah. I would too.
I agree.
So I, does anyone want to know what our millage rates are for next year?
Yeah, for sure.
Okay. Our general fund millage rate is .7756. This is what the, this budget is planned on. So .7756 gets us, or gets the township, $286,701. That's what our general fund millage brings in.
Okay.
2,086,000.
And what do we expect to get from state revenue sharing?
286,701. Then we get the state revenue sharing.
And that's expected to be about 780,000 or something, 770,000?
That's on the first page of the budget. So you can, you can see, yeah, 747,396. So thankfully, that's a per capita payment from the state. And the other one, you know, the property tax is just based on property. Okay. And then our police millage will be 4.3664. And that millage is expiring in 2020. So we'll, we'll need to put another renewal or something on the ballot coming up. Fire and medical rescue is 1.9675. That one expires in 2021. So, and then we have our building bond debt, which will finally get paid off in 2021. And that one is .7618. So the township total, in total, levies 7.8713. Bills.
So when the.
So can we get a copy of that?
Sorry? When the public safety building.
Excuse me.
Ms. Chick started first. Go ahead, Ms. Chick.
What, how much revenue does that, or expense do we, don't have to look at anymore?
Oh, when it goes, yeah. I don't know. We'd have to figure it out. Oh, when that goes away, it's about the same as our general fund. So about $280,000.
A year?
Yeah.
But that means our residents aren't paying that.
They aren't, the residents aren't paying that, yes.
Right.
So.
And as we know, that millage rate, all these millages come in the winter taxes, not the summer taxes.
Correct. Yeah.
For the township.
Yep. Okay.
Can we get a copy of this?
Oh, yes. You can have this one. I'll get more.
Yeah. I think we'd all like a copy, please.
Sure. Yeah, we can get it emailed to the entire board. I had to ask for it today, too. I didn't have it myself. Okay. All right. Are we done with the, the budget?
Ready to move to the report, the open bills?
Yep. Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the payment of the open bills with the expected check run date of 6/12/19 for a total of $98,991.96 from all funds in the municipal investment fund account.
Support.
Motion by Chalkley, support by Bellinger. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. That passes seven, zero. I'll make a motion to accept the check dispersment report for the paid bills. The check date was from 5/10/19 to 6/6/19 for a total of $288,157.15 from all funds in the municipal investment fund account.
A support.
Motion by Chalkley, support by Otto.
I had a question.
Any discussion on this?
I did have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
I probably should have, could have asked Dan. I didn't think of it then. On page number 11, we have a, maybe this is for the, this is public safety building fund, so I'm not sure. We have a sewer bill for like one REU.
Yep.
But I thought that we're on a metered, I was just kind of, just, I wasn't sure where this is. I thought we had a metered.
We do have a meter. And then we do charge one REU to the tenant.
Okay. Okay. So this, so this bill was paid by whom? We paid one REU to?
The one REU is billed to the tenant.
Billed to the tenant. Okay. So.
I'd like to have that checked out.
I'm confused. Is this a check on that?
That's not right.
Is this, is this a copy of checks we put out?
That's not right.
So Ms. Rains, just a little bit further on that. So we pay it, but we're billing them and getting reimbursed. Is that how it works?
Yes.
Okay. So that's why we have the bill then?
Yeah. It's similar to your heating, air conditioning, so on. By the contract, they pay a certain percentage based on their square footage. In this case, and there wasn't a way to do that, so we put it at one REU. And then we have the meter for the amount. So if you recall, when that went in, the number of REUs charged to the building went down substantially.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
That was my question.
Okay. And we didn't vote on it yet, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think there's.
I think we may be opposed.
I like to make sure about this. Because it looks to me like the township's paying.
Let's make sure that, just that we get reimbursed.
God, where do we find that, Mr. Bellinger?
You can check that out for you.
I can give the board a report.
Where, where, where are we getting that back?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
A support.
Motion by Chalkley, support by Otto. Any discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. That passes. And then there's the trustee liaison reports. I'll make a motion, well, I want to pull mine out, but I want to make a motion to accept the trustee liaison reports.
Support.
Okay. Motion by Chalkley, support by Bellinger. Any discussion? Okay. Chalkley, Bellinger. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold on a second.
I'm going to talk about mine.
Yep, the supervisor's has been.
I want my pulled out. Yeah.
Okay. I thought you were passing.
Well, we passed it. I'm not going to change any words here, but I do want to make a motion based on this. So, did you have a question about it, Mr. Docket?
Yes. I don't understand it.
Can you talk louder?
No, my voice is not good.
What do you want to?
The last paragraph.
The last part. The last paragraph, right?
You want to talk about the last one, right?
Okay.
Yep. Okay. It's about the county treasurer, Catherine McClary.
Yep.
Yeah, I had a question.
It says, "County Treasurer Catherine McClary has provided us with some legislative references that may indicate otherwise. I request that the board direct the attorney to determine absolutely the status of the parcels owned by the township." So we'd like some clarification on what this is about evidently?
Okay. Or what is the information? That's what I was going to ask, is what information was provided?
She gave us some MCL blah, blah, blah references. You know, on, it's, it's whether you can assess something or not assess something. And I have the numbers written down. But she says that if we purchase property for a public purpose, then it is not taxable. And the ta, and the assessor has just recently, you know, he, he doesn't put the park properties on the assessment rolls, but he put all of the Horseshoe Lake parcels on, all of that wetland. He put it back on the tax rolls so that the township will begin to have to pay taxes to everybody who gets taxes. And we can't afford to keep land like that if we're going to have to pay taxes on it. So I, I told Catherine that, about the, Catherine McClary, about the parcels that she's now offering us that are going into foreclosure. I said, "The only ones that we would possibly be interested in are these four in the park back here if the other ones are going to be on the tax rolls. We're not going to want them." So she called me up and said, "Well, but, but they're not. They shouldn't be on the tax rolls." And she had another legal citation that their attorney at the county uses on it. So we're try, I, we just need to get this all straightened out. And, and Mr. Burns can look up the, the legislation and tell us whether it should be or shouldn't be on the tax rolls.
Doesn't the assessor feel that his action was appropriate? I mean, where's the disconnect?
He does. Yeah. No, he was looking at a different MCL reference. And Catherine had this other one that she gave us. Ms. Rains, you have something to share about it?
Yes. When the assessor and I talked about all of our properties, the properties out back here, he said, "We're fine as far as being taxable because they were in your park plan, your master plan as a park." But from his viewpoint, the ones around Horseshoe Lake were not part of that master plan. But from his viewpoint, the ones around Horseshoe Lake were not part of that master plan, and he couldn't see where you had identified them for a specific purpose that would be a public purpose, and therefore he felt like they had to go back or go onto the tax rule. So that would be the question, you know, is he interpreting it right, or is there something else?
Correct.
And I guess he was part of that conversation, he said, between you and the treasurer.
Right, we, we had a three-way conversation on that, and so, with the county treasurer and Tom Oncheck and me, so I just would like Paul Burns to let us know for sure what should be on the tax rolls and what shouldn't be on the tax rolls.
So is that a motion?
Yes.
So what's the motion?
The motion is to direct the township attorney to determine absolutely the status of the parcels owned by the township in the Horseshoe Lake area, or whether, you know, what's a public purpose?
No, no, let's just.
No.
All right, whether those parcels should be on.
Yeah, let's just keep it simple.
Keep it simple.
Don't muddy the waters. I'll support that.
Okay. Motion by Chalkley, support by Zona.
Mr. Docket has a question.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Docket.
Well, why would we be responsible for paying for the lots in Horseshoe Lake association? Why would the township? Because they have an association. So why would we, why would the township have to pay?
Can we sell them?
I don't know.
Can we get rid of them? I want to get rid of them like yesterday.
Well, who wants to buy wetland?
All it is is wetland.
It sounds like we're stuck. How can we get rid of it?
Well, we shouldn't ever pay a penny. Let them go back, who cares? But they shouldn't be on our.
These were, these were properties that were, like, we were last resort, and we had to take them.
Well, now we're going to pay taxes on them? That seems absurd.
I agree. So we're going to find out.
I have them as underwater.
Okay.
There's no roads to it.
So we are, okay, we are going to find out about whether we, they're taxable or not.
Okay, next. Do we have a vote?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Yes, I don't find no.
Okay, so Mr. Docket is opposed, 6-1. Okay.
Anything else?
Call to the public.
Call to the public.
We, now is an opportunity for call to the public.
What was that? Hold on.
What?
We didn't vote to accept the consent.
We didn't vote to accept your report, though.
Well, I, okay. It was part of the consent agenda, I just wanted to talk about it.
Oh, okay.
Okay, yes, we did vote 7-0 for the trustee liaison reports.
Accept the supervisor reports, right? Or, okay.
Well, no.
With that.
We voted for them all, I just wanted to talk about it. Okay.
Confusing.
Sorry. Okay, second call to the public. Anybody who would like to address us, please keep your comments to three minutes. Feel free to come up and turn on the microphone, state your name and your address, and hold it up to your mouth so that TV land can hear you. And welcome again.
Still David Gordon on Helena Road. Tonight, we had more evidence again from Mr. Willis that the plant is handling this historic flows that we've had. I know that on my property, it's wetter than I've ever seen in 40 years. And it's really cool that he's using the existing equipment. So that was, that was good information. Mr. Ains mentioned that this retention holding tank is recommended by the engineer, but my question is, how much do they make on this? Because I think they just got a $200,000 contract for the engineering, but then there's the actual construction of the tank overseeing that, plus the expansion of the two lines that are being talked about, the trunks that are being talked about expanding. It's not surprising that he recommends it. You don't want to ask the fox for a plan to protect the chicken coop and pay him whatever he wants. I mean, he's going to, he's going to take you to the cleaners. And lastly, I think what Mr. Ains said should be taken to heart when he talked about how his church of a thousand congregants is considering a $3 million expansion. What he did talk about also was the community buy-in. What I don't think we have here is a community buy-in for seven or eight million dollars in sewer expenses. As a matter of fact, I doubt that the church elders went out and spent $75,000 on plans to expand without first informing the congregants that they were thinking about a $3 million expansion. And that's what the $200,000 here is about. You're spending $200,000 of the sewer customers' money that's only valuable if you put out, put in the $5 million tank. Without the tank, it's a $200,000 waste. So I think you need to get your community buy-in before you go spend this money. I guarantee you, there's 2,500 members or customers that are sewer customers, they have not, they are not aware of the fact that you guys are planning on hitting them with an increase that's going to take their bill from $360 a year to over 500. I think it's your responsibility to, to reach out to them and let them know if that's your plan. If they're in favor of it, cool. I don't think they, I don't think they will be, and I think that's why you're hesitant to spend the money to go out and, and let them know. But I believe it's your responsibility. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else at this time like to speak to the board? Okay, seeing no one, board member comments?
I have a comment and question, just kind of a follow-up on the Bark Park rules. So I want to thank the board for now that we passed, you know, a measure to actually have some enforceable ordinances or rules at the Bark Park. Can, is there just a quick synopsis on now what happens for those that are curious about when enforcement's going to begin to occur, when violators are found there at the Bark Park with multiple dogs and whatnot? Is there any answer or any, any way we can, I can, I can let the public know when these, when we can start enforcing this? I don't know who can answer, but if anybody here knows the answer to this question?
So generally, the rules have to be completed. Jennifer's working on them to conform to the ordinance. Then they have to be posted on the Bark Park facility, and then Mr. Turner can start writing civil infractions.
Is there anything, there's no other delays other than those?
That's it.
Okay, great.
Ah, there's 30 days after it's.
Well, the ordinance tonight that got adopted has to be published before it goes into effect.
Now, also, can our officers enforce some of these rules or write citations?
I believe we would have the code enforcement officer do it as a civil infraction.
Okay. But the, but he's only on 20 hours a week. Ms. Otto?
One thing I wanted to bring up in regards to the zoning compliance, and I forgot to mention it. I noticed that we're attaching documents on something that was denied by the planner, and I'm wondering why this document is in our packet?
Those were not in the packets.
That is.
They were, no.
That is.
It wasn't, it wasn't in your packet, it was in your mailbox for information. You'll know that, you'll note that it wasn't in the rubber-banded packet. Yeah.
I don't check the seat, because a lot of stuff. So this doesn't go, this doesn't go into the regular packet online?
Not anymore.
Okay. Okay, because I was worried, because this is ZBA, I mean, this is denied, and the ZBA hasn't even looked at this yet, and you're, and I thought if you're putting it out in public, then there's some bias already out there, so.
We changed that.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
A follow-up?
Well, let Ms. Chick.
No, I, I have one more thing. The only, since it's board member's comments, I thought that I would let everyone know that we are having the Fourth of July parade on the Fourth of July for Kwanis, and we are, have announcement out there for a hover, hoverboard team, if any teenagers are interested in participating in the parade with their hoverboards. We also are looking for volunteers to help with some of the traffic control, and I think, and I am looking for one person who would love to be a clown, so you can contact me.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Bellinger.
I have a follow-up on that. Why is it that we cannot have our officers issue a citation, or what is, is there, is there any reason not to, or they cannot? Somebody calls at 8:00 PM and the code enforcement's not available?
I can check that. I, I don't know, the officers typically write tickets under the uniform traffic control, civil infractions, but they may be able to write a civil infraction under this ordinance. I'll take a look.
I appreciate that, because 20 hours a week and whatnot, it's going to be kind of hard for them to catch violators, or?
They hate writing dog tickets.
Yeah.
Okay. We have board member comments, we, we finished call to the public, but.
You should just block some stuff up that is new news.
New news.
Enforcement of the dog park rules are useless.
You should.
They're only be handled when the code enforcement officer is working.
Right. Come on up.
We, we have police, Chuck Steuer, 766 Mile Road. The, Mr. Burns's interpretation of how the laws would, how, how the ordinance would be enforced completely is out of line with the reason we asked for the ordinance. I'm with Parks and Rec.
Yeah, I know.
Okay?
Yeah.
And was one of the pushers behind the dog park.
I'm not, I'm not saying they can't be, I'm going to look it up.
We need clarification in that.
I understand that, but it's the first time.
Because if it, if we can't use police officers to enforce, enforce that, that there are people using the dog park 18 out of the 24 hours in the day, and the code infraction, and the enforcement, the code officer only works part-time, I believe, correct?
Right.
So I mean, the only way that that's acceptable from my perspective at the dog park is that the dog park hours would be posted as being the same as the code enforcement officer. And that's not going to make a whole lot of our township people. Problem we're having is not people in the township misuse in the park, it's a business that is located in Livingston County that's abusing our rules to the park.
Okay, thank you for that information. We'll have this checked out.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you much. Okay, we're, we're doing, board member comments, I guess we are. Okay, Ms. Chick?
So real quickly, because I forgot, I just wanted to welcome National Fiber Optics to Northfield Township. They will be located at 6785 Whitmore Lake Road. They recently got their, both their conditional use approval with conditions and their site plan approval, so.
Good. Yeah. All right. Ms. Bellinger?
I want to thank trustee Otto for reminder of the parade, the information on that, and thank the public for information and call to public. Thank the board for good meeting.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Docket?
I agree with David Gordon. I didn't think I'd say that too much, but I do. And everybody should buy new local stores and have a nice night. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
As we were going through the bills and budget, people's express is still waiting for their check from 2/28/19. So just for your information, Ms. Ains, if you could look into that. Basically, the motion was to authorize the supervisor and manager to sign the contract pending review and approval by the township attorney. And that was on 2/28/19.
So, okay.
I think it was basically the same contract we've had for the last three years, so I'm not expecting it to be a huge review, but.
Yeah.
Anyway, as we were going through the budgets and meant to bring that up, but I finally remembered to do that.
If I could respond, Mr. Burns says that it has been rewritten, the contract, and so we'll look into.
Okay.
I don't know where it's at, if we've administratively received it. If we have, I'll see if it gets done.
All right. And then, yeah, I mean, it has been the wettest spring in 60 years, and I think our plant is doing a mighty fine job. Thank you.
Ms. Manley?
Um, two things to address, Mr. Gordon. I do want to talk to Dan a little bit more, Dan Willis, at the sewer plant about this third basin, and if that's a possible solution to maybe some of this, I mean, what, using that third retention basin?
Have you ever gone to that plant?
No. When, and that's why I want to talk to him. And then I'll also investigate the cost of a survey, and you'll see what that might cost.
It's a good idea.
I think that was it. All right, thank you.
Mr. Ains has something?
Yes, regarding the public not knowing that the retention tank has been a subject of discussion, it's been, just in the 23 months or so I've been here, it's probably been on once a month. It's been on the website, it's been in the minutes, it's been in the recordings here, it's been in the direct mailings that have been part of the tax statements, et cetera. So, you know, I would find it difficult that anybody who pays any attention at all to the township would not be aware that this is an issue. But, you know, your budget hearings are to have people make comments on what's in the budget, which this is a budget item. And you see the attendance tonight on the budget, and so I'm not arguing over priorities, I'm arguing over the fact that I think the board has made every effort to notify the public on this issue.
It's been in, it's been in the newsletter, too, and it'll be in again.
It's never been loaded on by the public.
So anyway, well, thank you all for coming tonight, and we are out before 10:00. Anyway.
Motion to adjourn? Support.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Stay here.